Tonight, we're going to be led in the place by Ms. Paula Barnes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Good luck welcoming everybody here tonight. I guess probably meeting number four, I guess, on the budget. Hopefully, we're getting towards, hopefully, getting towards the end of it. I think Mr. Sandvik's got some change, several changes, I guess. Ms. Odom, I believe you've mentioned you've got a few, so I'm going to turn it over to you and let you carry on.
Of course, this, we are approaching town to meet with the county commission there. So, tonight, changes, additions, deductions, or things that you want to bring up, please do tonight, so we can begin to work through it. Mr. Sandvik spent last week working with the, at a state meeting. Still, they tell me today, though, they were saying we couldn't get some of the revenue pieces till end of June, which is unfortunate. Some of the changes that you'll see mainly tonight, we have reduced the number of teachers by 10 requested. We've moved 54 teachers to help with the staffing of Stewart Creek High School, other high schools, even schools that were not directly involved in the rezoning. We've moved teachers from those, looked at numbers and seen where we could. So, with 54 positions moved like that, it's allowed to take another look at the number of teachers, so we've done that. The other big change tonight, I think, is the insurance piece. And that, because the insurance committee met, and I guess the county commission's still got to meet and discuss that, but we'll, where we think it stands based upon the insurance committee, and we'll go from there. So, but please, tonight, anything, and we'll go to line by line if you want to, and talk about some of these and what it means. A few people have been, you'll see a minus one or a plus one, it's where people have been moved from one category to another or something like that. As Jeff comes back from some of these accounting meetings and all, you find out that they're beginning to count something in another area, so if, you know, there's, but there's really no, not a whole lot of change. Most of it's just an adjustment when you do that, so. Why don't you start with the top page, Jeff Force, and let's talk about that insurance first, I think?
And this is the medical insurance update, which does have a profound effect on our budget. Active employees, we met on Thursday, April 25th, at the insurance committee, and we did approve rates effective Jan., for January 1st, 2014. And I'd like to remind you all, as of January 1st, 2013, we had a 20% increase. Well, this year, we're, it's averaging 24%. The plan, the deductible plan, our old option two is the middle bullet up there, that has a 24.2% increase. That is the plan for active employees, where we have seen the issues with claims and expenditures exceeding our revenue. The committee did maintain a 10% employee, 90% employer split for individual coverage. The HRA plan, which on the sheet that has the two pink lines, the HRA is the third option under each of the four groups that we have. The HRA is our, it has the lowest benefits, and we kept it 100% employer paid for people who like that plan. And, you know, it's designed more for people who don't have some major health issues and all like that. The first proposal failed. It was a tie, and a tie fails. We had talked about earlier, even last year, we had a 13% employee pay, 87% employer pay for any employee with dependent coverage, be it employee with spouse, a single employee with children, or husband, wife, and children. But that failed. In 2013, that's the one that had a 12%, 88% split. And we voted last year and talked about slowly realizing we were going to have to reduce that employer pay because just our insurance expenditures have gone up so fast in recent years. The second proposal did pass. It has the employee split for dependent coverage ranging from 13% to 17% for the co-pay and the deductible plans. And then we added a small percentage employee, a small employee percentage pay for the dependent coverage in the HRA, a health reimbursement account plan, between 1 and 3%. And the version I have in the budget file, same data, but shown differently, is the sheet with the pink lines across it. So, if you go down in any one column, the leftmost column, first pink line, currently certified with children, no spouse, the employee pays 108, 88 for 10 months. And the board pays, that, this is the blue number underneath, it's 798, 52. We do pay the lion's share. Well, effective next January, the employee will pay 146, 04 over on a 10-month basis. This, this, this shift has, you know, it's noticeable. It is especially noticeable in the married with family group. That group will see the largest increases. And this ver, this plan will be, go to the budget committee this Thursday night at the commission, and presumably go to the full commission a week from Thursday. That's the normal, you know, unless it gets held up at the budget committee level. I hesitated before voting for this one. My concern was that the next version would be worse for our employees, so. And Regina and I had some discussion on that, but I was very concerned the next version would even increase the employee pay more if we didn't, if that one didn't pass.
Yes, sir.
Traditionally, has the commission accepted the...
Traditionally, yes, sir.
But when it comes to the full commission, it could be, it could be dissected again.
Yes, it could, and it could be dissected on June 28th at that July meeting when the budget is set. And this is a huge part of our budget. The, in, on the four-page format that I give you all, our total staffing increase is $9 million of, third column, black numbers over, bottom of that page, the labor subtotal, $9,135,140. If you look on the next page, third column over, our medical insurance, even after this change, is $5,709,972. It's, it is a major part of our budget. Our, our new teachers, classroom teachers, excluding librarians, guidance, and all that, we have $6.7 million in the budget for them. So, these are the trends we are seeing, so.
As far as the January 1st, 2014...
Yes, sir.
When healthcare performance kicks in fully, do we know of any surprises that could be waiting in the wings that they're talking about presently?
At the, on the second page of the four-page report item, and this is not a surprise, this is another, we've talked about it earlier, object code 299, other fringe benefits, you see that that's going up $586,508. Nearly all of that is the new $63 basically tax for the health, the overall healthcare act.
And that's per employee?
Per covered individual.
Individual.
So, if there are four in your family, we pay, yeah, 252?
Okay.
I'm very calculated.
So, it's individual.
That line, 299, on that sheet, kind of gives you a picture of it.
Yeah.
It's like that $64 per covered.
Yeah. And we may be moving that into our in, medical insurance line. I bet's, I'm getting, I want the state, we, they kind of hinted they would want us to budget it as part of medical insurance, but I want clarification before we, I move it up in.
When you say they...
The state.
Okay.
The State Department of Education. We, we, under the private act and under state law, we really have to follow how they want us to account for stuff. And, you know, we kind of work it out with audit, too, but, yeah. Lisa has already budgeted hers and county general as part of medical insurance. Ours will probably move into that, but I'll mention that one.
This allows you to see how much it is.
Yeah, that's why I wanted it separate.
If they do switch it, you'll know where it was.
Yeah. And I think part of the reason that the, and I'll move on to retire, well, I'm sorry, let me stop there. One of the, when you ask if there are any surprises for us, one of the good points for us is in the, on my sheet with the pink lines, the third block of numbers over, certified and classified individuals, it's just past the halfway mark of numbers on that page. If you will look at that for our more expensive plans even, with the, with the increase, our, the deductible person will be at $69.62. We are under the 9.5% threshold that would allow one of our lowly, low compensated employees, an EA, a cafeteria worker, custodian to, but we are under that 9.5% of W-2 wages, so that our employees will not be able to go to the health, our active employees won't be able to go to the healthcare exchange and generate any penalty against us. We're very fortunate for that. There are a lot of systems who are not in that situation. So, we should be, we should be covered on that, and that's, that would be the big gotcha. We should be fine audit. And I think if the commission is interested in seriously changing the rates, I think for individual coverage, I think that's our ammunition to say, no, we don't need to do that because we'll be generating the penalty if we do that.
Yes, sir.
So, but kind of moving to the retirees, I think the tend, the reason they were open to coming up with a solution, even though it's only a one-year solution, is with January 2014 being the first year for the healthcare exchanges, we don't know what's going to be out there, and wanting our employees to, our pre-65 retirees to not have to face that change necessarily January 1st, 2014.
In case all the board members did garner what the committee recommendation for the pre-65 employees, could Jeff explain what they wound up doing?
Well, Ms. Harvey and I voted for what the board wanted. I made an amendment basically reversing the motion, and it was allowed. I'm surprised about that, but we were the only two who voted for it. And what Ms. Stinson presented was going with, for this year only, going with 62.5%, I'm sorry, 65.5% county or school board paid for single pre-65 retirees, and 63.5% for those with family coverage, the pre-65 retirees, which essentially gives them about a 10% increase for this 2014 plan year. And that is anyone who retires in 2013. But basically deferred action on it, and the problem will be addressed next year, and she will be working with consultants, you know, investigating and all that, coming up, what kind of other plan can we offer that group that maybe would be a less expensive insurance? So, we'll have to see.
When they made the comparison, the, the active employees versus the pre-65 retirees, I thought the 65.5 and 63.5 pretty much made a...
At that point, that's before they went to the different levels of pay, depending on which plan you chose for your dependents. Before they made that change...
It was comparable?
It was comparable, but as soon as that other change was made, the pre-65s have a half, less than half the increase of the active employees. So, it's definitely deferred the issue for a year. So, they're better off for a year.
Well, and I, and I'd like to see, and I pray this board will be very active in that process and, and, and I would say giving direction, but at least giving suggestions and, and proposals to, to, to help that situation because, again, and not to beat a dead horse, but, you know, having an older group like them, such a small number, it's just destined to get, you know, exponentially higher increases. So, I'm hopeful that we can maybe help find a solution to this.
Well, and I think, too, for some of the people in this group, they may, active healthcare exchanges have been in place for a while, for some of the people may, in this group, may be at an income level where they can get subsidy through the healthcare exchanges. And for some of them, that might be a better alternative than staying in our plan. And it depends on the income level and all. We just, we, it's too early to know, so. And I, any other questions on the insurance? I think that pretty well covers it.
We see at the top of the black sheet that you referred to for retirees, that is classified...
The 11 by 17 sheet.
Correct.
For the board of ed rates, it's certified and classified have the same rates.
Right.
Yes, sir.
But, but this one is identified as certified. If you wanted to see it somewhere as classified, you can see it here on this page.
The, the rates are the same on my page with the pink lines. I, I still, in case the way the rates wind up different, I'd still account for those two different groups.
Right.
Even though the rates are the same.
Right, and they are, they're the same.
And that was a good thing that we were able to do that, and we were able to make that happen.
I would like to commend Mr. Sandvik for his effort in that area, because...
And the REA joining us in there.
REA, yes, and it was, it was good effort.
Well, and some of the people who voted for this, this approved version, the county mayor voted for it, Will Jordan voted for it. We may have a better chance of this version making it through to the full commission and see what happens than the end of June.
You're going to go to page two now?
Ready, page two.
And then we can kind of look at the line, this is kind of overview.
Yeah. As I mentioned, the insurance as approved by the, I said, should've said insurance committee, I'm sorry, but about 24% increase effective beginning of 2014, and we have four months of this past January's increase, just that's the way it works with us. The 1.5% state teacher raise, and of course, we put in a matching raise for classified with social security, Medicare, and retirement totals $3,8,416. This is, this next bullet is not a change, but it's, I've updated it a bit. The 2.1 million in additional technology expenditures to help get us ready for part of, well, I did get confirmation at, at my meeting that all of this will be covered. I, there was a little, by new state non-recurring money. I was a little afraid they somehow run it through at the last minute where it'd be a shared thing in the BEP or something, but it will all be state in and out revenue for us.
And that shows up on other pages, which we'll point out in a minute, you'll see that.
Yeah, and, and it is an increased revenue for us, so it doesn't matter. Mr. Zago and I need to meet a bit more, and then meet with Mr. Odom a bit more. We're getting close to that point where we can give a good number for our new costs for, I mean, Stewart's Creek High this next year. I talked to Mr. Odom, we didn't want to get a number out everywhere and then be able to lower it a bit. It's, it ties into all of our transfers of teachers and all, it's, it's a pretty nebulous number, but we'll, we'll come up with a, one that's in the budget. Changes since our last meeting on the 17th, of course, the medical insurance, the increase we had on insurance is that the board essentially is absorbing 90% of the increase for these pre-65 retirees. And by this, that change, so we're charging different rates depending on which plan you're in for your dependents and what mix of dependents you have, now we are paying an average of 75.5% of the increase in projected premiums. In the previous budget version, where I had the 90%, 87% for all employee with dependents, we were paying 87.6%. So, that, that is a major shift.
How long have we been a partially self-funded health insurance plan?
Oh, way before I came here. Even when we were with Blue Cross Blue Shield, before we went with William C. Beeler, we were self-funded. I think when we went in the same plan with the county perhaps, but it's been at least since, I think, early 90s.
Well, I think of self-funded as you paying the entire tab. We're kind of partially self-funded, aren't we, up at about 3/4 of a million?
Oh, right, yes. I think we've always had some stock loss level, and I'm thinking it was about a quarter of a million when I came here, but, yeah. Yeah, we have always had some of that, I'm sure, just in case you have that disaster. And we've had the years where we have had multiple people exceed that. There, there is a net reduction due to the insurance changes of $507,880. We were able to take out 10 teaching positions because we were able to move more existing positions to Stewart's Creek High School. That's a net reduction of $441,000. I had an error in debt service. We had paid off from our first, when we redid the ballast and the light fixtures in 2005. We had also paid off the principal on our interest-free loan, I'll add. I had to add Star Parent Portal. We won't be running that through Race of the Top this year. And Dr. Harold wanted to also get a small activity bus. And for those of you who are new to the board, we typically buy those out of driver's ed funds. Well, we're buying him a big bus, a big activity bus out of those. So, he agreed, we have about $30,000 we're not going to spend in building program for copiers. He is going the lease route. And he agreed to shift $44,000 out of next year's startup funds to amend to the building program so that we can, and then we will buy a small activity bus out of his building program money and this $44,000, kind of a net wash there. And then we shifted one, Transportation Department, there was a position added three years ago, maybe, as a 10-month, and that has been shifted to a 12-month position. And those are the changes between the two versions, or here in the last version.
And all of the Carl Perkins money, I mean, we're still getting that?
As far as, we don't know the sequestration effect on that, and, you know, we didn't get, we didn't get much of an update on that. The, I think, 5.2 to 5.8% number that, numbers that we've been hearing may be, may be creeping up, but they weren't telling us what that might be, and we should, we should be getting these allocations.
And all of that money is, is going to supplies now?
Or, yes, supplies, equipment.
Career and technical education is done by the Carl Perkins.
The choice to lease the copiers at Stewart's Creek High School, reasonable, typical, occurring at other places?
I don't like leases except for coffee machines. Basically, you wind up with a piece of junk.
So, there are other places where we're doing that as well?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. And essentially, when we get them through the state contract, we're really leasing them through the state's person.
Jeff, I was, just looking at this 19 million, and I'm just looking, this thing, we've got, you know, 5.6 on the insurance increase.
Which page, Mr. Harv?
I'm just, I'm just working, I'm off, I'm working off the back page here, where you get your increase of 19. Just take the insurance, you know, 5.6 out of it. Out of the total, do you got a good idea of what the, it look like most of the new schools going to be taking, large in the yard?
The new school after, after insurance is probably the biggest piece, yes, sir.
I mean, just looking at each line I'm down here, I just want to make sure I'm looking at it the right way, I guess. It doesn't look like a whole lot increases other than, you know, what you're doing with the, the new school.
Let me go, let's put down this sheet, if you want to, because there's some numbers that I mean, I marked, I need to ask, if somebody may ask and, and give you some, too. So, look at this small one, Mr. Hodge is looking at. For example, you see in the principal, the category up there, increase 117,928. That's basically what you're talking about there. Remember, we start in building new school, we start at principal. The position was counted in, in our current budget, but you only had to fund about half of it. So, what you're having is that you're funding all of it, plus the other positions in there for all the other principals as part of that 1.5% and everything else that goes into it. So, even though you're seeing a number of 117,000, part of it is Stewart's Creek, part of it is another 1.5% for all the remaining administrative. There's just certain things that catch your eye, and I want you to kind of be able to take a look at. The supervisor director under this category, Angel's been moved from one category to another based upon that, so you'll see a plus one in another place that offset, saying, and I'm talking about line 105, what I'm looking at. And the 98.8 teachers, you can see that, that's, that's in your line 116. I guess another place where you see a pretty good, three positions in guidance, line 123. Again, a good bit of that is your Stewart's Creek, plus your 1.5% for everybody else, and the other cost is associated with the other 91 guidance personnel there. Looking at line 129, again, you see a large figure there, that, again, Stewart's Creek plays into that with the other 54 that's there, same way, because you're adding back in the starting late this year, you know, plus another librarian, you had one built into this year, and they get two librarians. State rules and regulations tell us, based on that number, you know, they have to have two, so one last year, add back in for this year. The medical personnel at 131 is, is a nurse for basically Stewart's Creek, which you're looking at there. The instructional computer personnel, 138, is different, and this is... And this is kind of the STS's and, and, and with the park assessments and everything coming up in fourteen fifteen. Um, we, we had cut back on those quite a bit, a lot of our halftime, that sort of thing. So what we're trying to do is get back where we have with these large middle schools again, that we can have a person that can stay there and help them through these multiple assessments per year that may be coming. So that's a, that really goes back to more of where we were once upon a time.
Oh, yes.
Is what we're talking about here, but it would be an increase from where we had cut back before. And system principals there, basically, you're looking at Stewart's Creek. The clerical personnel and all deals with, at, at our schools, we have a person that does the attendance. I mean, that's, that's dealing with that, the extra personnel and I think what else was in that one?
That's pretty much.
Which star and that sort of thing with those, that position. The incident that this is the last year's star, you know, I mean, uh, we will not be supported after this. The state has put out the RFP. They're not announcing what, who they'll recommend or what they're gonna recommend, but the grapevine says that they're gonna probably recommend three, four, five providers that have different tiers of support and it'll be up to districts then to look at those and make the choices which one they might choose to replace STAR. You know, that's, and STAR's our attendance accounting program that is transmitted directly to the state. So I even talked to Mr. Mays this morning, he did not know because they've been told at the state not to talk yet until this RFP and everything is completed, so. That'll be a, that conversion next year may be a pretty good budget item.
Yes.
Maybe in the past, that, that could, that's been a few hundred thousand dollars in some instances, I don't know. We'll just see how they have the state bid, what requirements they put in the language to do it, but we know that's coming, that's the train coming down the track.
Several years ago, uh, STAR was a nightmare to, to work with. So can I assume that by the time, now that we've gotten comfortable with it, it's gone away?
Yes, sir.
Is that pretty much the deal?
Be a good summer statement.
Cause I remember six, six years ago, seven years ago, it was, it was always being talked about at board meetings, how, how slow and how you would lose the input after spending hours with it, and it's just not a very good system and now it's gotten.
It's gotten better. Uh, Pearson purchased it, Pearson, of course, is the large concomitant of that thing, but, and so, um, uh, they said they would support it one more year. They also own Power School and there's one Chattanooga Chancery. Uh, they have two other attendance programs or so like that, so, um, you know, they didn't want to support a third platform. So basically, we've got to change, but too hot, we don't think so just yet, so that's in the future. I, I do think it'll be, um, a change will be good, but it, it will not be cheap, I don't, I don't think. Uh, looking at your educational assistance, there, a lot of that's gonna come down to some of your sped stuff, and I would say, again, with those ratios that you have to maintain, pretty good increase there. Custodial personnel, um, a lot of that Stewart's Creek, how many, you handle that, how many custodians you think in Stewart's Creek?
The lead in ten custodians, I believe.
Something like that. So you have full-time equivalents that you're working on on that too. One, speech and language, um, trying to see if we had other things there. The second page, and was anybody else have a question on page one? Let's, give you a chance, I asked the question, that was the only questions I would ask and looked at, talked about, see anything else? This is the summer sheet, so it kind of.
Let me ask, let me ask this, for, probably Mr. Zago, the, all the shifting from school to school, 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 to Stewart's Creek thing is, that pretty well settled out? Do you, you got those transfers? The numbers identified, I guess, that you think each school should have and those positions transferred or?
Yes, sir, as far as moving positions from one school to Stewart's Creek or providing another position for another school, that is, that's, that's all training back?
Mister, in some instances, uh, if somebody left, the box retired, resigning, some other reason, um, they chose to transfer the vacancy to Mr. Harold at Stewart's Creek. So he'll be, it won't be a new position, you know, it's one of those transfers, but then he'll be recommending somebody in the hall for that position, so.
Were you successful making sure all four of the principals were unhappy when you finished your presentation?
Um, Mr. Zago, I believe everybody never felt unhappy.
Maybe several, cause we went to schools that didn't, were not part of the transfer.
I believe they had a Mr. Zago phone to bring it up.
And that, and it kind of, unfortunately comes with the territory, but everybody loses the teacher they don't want to lose or don't lose teachers that they do want to lose and all that kind of thing, so.
I believe everybody understood, the principals were very nice when I would call them, they, they understood the need and they understood the tactics of the books this year. Being unhappy was not a true statement there.
Uh, I, I, and I do an obvious.
Everybody wants the best for their schools, as we all know, and as principals, you know, hope, but they were very good impressions.
They have been, they've been very honest with us.
The majority of positions were voluntary.
And we're in the process now where opened up, where people from other schools are getting to apply for those vacancies. So if other teachers in the system are wanting transfers, you know, we, basically, you know, our system, we do our transfers, we open it up to others in the system. Then we go to really what the advertised and other people that may not be in the system, kind of that tiered down, so that's the process we're working through right now. The second page, the big medical insurance there, because we've talked about that a while ago, that's on line two oh seven. That's what Jeff was talking about, insurance, an increase of five point seven million there.
Can I, can I ask, do, do we see a future with insurances or where, where it may be?
No, sir, in, in my opinion, though. Maybe not twenty percent increases, but I, I don't see, I don't see it slowing down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah. One of the reasons, and, uh, we got an insurance presentation last week from the state teachers' plan. And one of the reasons I've been comfortable with our rates is, in years we haven't had some increases and all, the state hasn't had increases either in their plan. But now with this, the budget, we have two years of very steep increases where the state isn't, has, isn't having as steep an increase.
But they changed the state plan?
Yeah, they have state, changed state plans substantially.
They're not covering as much as they did.
No.
The other line, which we've, we've kind of, um, can see, we're talking, they employ you Medicare there, just a pretty good figure again, but that's all tied to part of this also. But two ninety-nine deadline, Jeff, it may show up in the budget that when it finally comes to the commission that night, this might be rolled into that if that's what they tell us to do. But for you tonight, you can see two ninety-nine, is that sixty-four dollars per cover member, so. If you get asked that question, what is the Obamacare piece cost to do that, that gives you a pretty good number to work from, okay? So you can see.
And, and of our rate increase, our consultant estimate is only three percent of that twenty-four increase is due to the cost of Obamacare, plus this piece.
The, um, contracts with vehicle owners there and all, there's actually nine transit buses and one sped bus this time. We added none last year, added a thousand students and no new buses. Um, so again, if we were looking over a two-year period, if we happen to get it again, you're gonna have a two thousand people increase here. Uh, so, right now, that's, that's in there, so it kind of lets you know what we're talking about.
Well, and those are some nuggets to share with the commission, they had the teacher, uh, moving the teachers around and, and those new buses. Those, those are some good bullet points as far as savings by the board, so.
Have we seen any change at all with the percentage of students that ride buses now compared to three, five years ago?
It's shifted up as the fuel prices have gone up.
And we're adding students plus we're, the percentage of students of the transportation now that we're going to.
I believe we have two hundred and twenty-eight buses, I think my number, I probably didn't remember if it's correct. There's a parent meeting the other night that was asking, I estimated at two thirty and Kim Snell was here and she said, "Do you want me to?" I think that's where we are. Um, I guess, something else catch your eye on that page that you were asking about? It's very important that, that our board understands that, cause we sent the night with the commission, they're asking, um, I want you to be able to understand it too and speak to it, you know, with what you know. Well, that's, that's our desire.
As far as three sixty-nine and three seventy, is, as far as that, is, is that just the new bid because we're, it was rebidded this year and?
That one is always hard to judge, um, because we can have swings late in the year. When I looked at the amendment, looked at, and I, I haven't brought that amendment forward yet. I, I wait, I wanted to wait till some more sub-bills hit. Uh, it looked like this was a very good number compared to where we were at that point last year. So it may be, it may be a little too conservative, but when I put it in, it looked pretty reasonable. And a lot of these non-labor numbers, I knew we weren't gonna have much latitude. It's fairly easy to amend within these categories, pretty acceptable to the commission.
Did, did I recollect correctly that, uh, January twenty-fourteen, some of the subs?
Right.
Are affected by the healthcare requirement?
And I did build that in.
Okay, is that, is that probably the, the part for the increase here?
That's, that's part of it, yes, yeah. But in the bid that we got, and that's the advantage of going with Holland, they do know their sub pools. So their estimate of how many people will qualify for insurance under Affordable Care should be pretty decent.
Continues to amaze me how much this, this medical, other support is affecting our budget. We continue to talk about it. Probably even more than the new high school.
Continue to talk about it.
We actually have more lately. Anything else on that page, page two? We're looking at page three, again, um, again, much of the instructional supplies, materials, that first, uh, comes in, um, basically employ additional teachers. Startup of a new school, that sort of thing, got off that you do with this line, four twenty-nine, talking about there. Uh, Jeff did put a little bit more money in for library books this year, um, you put in, how much was it you finally put in?
Added fifty cents to that allocation. Still low, but we just need to work on increasing.
Is that term, books, are we talking about that Hesse or Harbeck or are we talking a generic kind of a, a term there that would mean some, some sense of?
We have, we've opened it up to online subscriptions and all that related for this money, uh.
We have, the, the place where we have probably opened it up is, um, the online encyclopedias and that. We do do subscriptions instead of buying encyclopedias and, and some of those research books for a few years now. I can tell you exactly, we've been doing that subscription, so, uh, much of that comes that way. And we've talked so much about, Jeff and I were talking today about if we had online textbooks and things like that at all. And I, I can tell you right now, uh, our bandwidth and all, until we get something changed, we, we honestly couldn't have. I mean, it, we, it's been significant, we're planning, of course, to double our bandwidth, uh, coming up in around June, July, that's in this budget to do that. Um, there's some more software that AT&amp;T provides, again, that talks, that lets us track where bandwidth's being used and that sort of thing. I can tell you from, um, reading what's going on in some, some other states, that when they have to go into that testing mode online, they very often have to prioritize that and give very little to anything else. Well, very often these online textbooks now, you can download a textbook version, but they have links all through them back to update. And so, uh, I, I don't know right now that we could handle it. I was reading somewhere in, uh, one major school district in the country, one of, one of the larger ones was saying, they could probably spend a million dollars a month on bandwidth. Just think about that figure.
Wow.
Uh, and, and they're trying to do some of the same thing too, so I think that's an unknown to us too. I mean, I think that looms out there, that even though what sounds good and why don't you do this, th- there's also a side cost to that that's gonna take a long analysis and.
Mr. Holland, one thing to add to that, ACT group has a perimeter increase today.
I saw that. ACT is going to online version to fourteen fifty. Big paper. I would assume when that happens, cause we give ACT Explorer, Plan and ACT, I would assume they kind of use the term generic ACT. So it would not surprise me at all if all three of those do not become online from there. And the state pays for one, one submission, you know, of a test for, um, Explorer, Plan and ACT. Start from eighth grade, begin with Explorer. Line five thirteen, Jeff hopes that workman's comp may be lowered. We don't have that.
Talked to Lisa today, it may not happen.
May not happen, it was a hope we were having.
Yeah.
Trying to deal with that particular piece. Um, the two big items at the bottom, seven oh nine and, uh, seven twenty-two, is that about two point one billion, two point one eight or something like that? That would, is the one-time state of technology money, one of the things we have to help our commissioners and others realize, this is one-time money, but it's not, it's not direct Rutherford County money. It's state sales tax and that sort of thing coming from the governor's budget to do that. Actually complimented him the other day when we did the TEL survey, he was at Stewart's Creek and did the TEL survey. Seventy-two of the areas we were showing increases in, it's about eight or nine where we had, um, a little bit of in, decrease. And, and the increase, one of the, the largest decrease that we had was in, um, internet accessibility from, and teachers, you know, ninety-one, a little over ninety-one percent of our teachers feel this out. It's over nine percent, and I fully understand that with our growth, when, when bandwidth's used up, they can't get on, they want on. And I commended him for, um, having the vision to put this one-time money into it with bandwidth, cause I think it'll help us address the TEL survey issues dealing with bandwidth. So encouraged him, since we couldn't look at more years, but anyway, uh, did do that. So that, that money is that one-time state money that's coming through, it's not raise Rutherford County's property tax to cover that. So we need to make that clear, cause that's a huge increase there, you can see. When you have a six thousand two hundred thirty-five percent increase, you can see what we're talking about there in that line symbol there.
Well, and, and, I'm kind of along that line, Mr. Odom. I, in this year's budget, at this point, we have one hundred five point six million in local county revenue. The balance of our two hundred and seventy-one million in revenue is state, and there's a small amount that's federal, under a million that's federal in this budget.
Will you give those numbers again?
Uh, one hundred and five point six million is state, categorized as local, I'm sorry, sales tax, property tax, uh, license plate stickers. And then the balance of two hundred and, I'm sorry, one hundred and?
Seventy-three, seventy-four?
Yeah. Once, one sixty, one sixty-three, one sixty-four is state. The line, most of our budget and our state percentage has been increasing.
I think it's one seventy-three, didn't we have two seventy-nine or something like that?
Now, I'm looking at, on the revenue side, Mr. Odom, yeah, it's. Yeah, it's, yeah, just looking at the revenue side.
Because we had, yeah, we had, the rest of it was, remember, you had to carry over into fund balance.
From fund balance, yeah.
He's right.
So, thirty-nine percent of our budget is local revenue. The rest is state and a tad of federal.
It's about, we were up to about eleven percent of selling the federal on last year's report.
And, and this is just looking at the GP budget. It, it ignores our federal projects and the federal money that's in the cafeteria line. Our ROTC reimbursement is really the only federal money we have in the G P budget.
So, what's that, a million from the feds or?
It's in the state report card too. You can actually look, because it'll be one year behind our current year.
Oh, okay.
But that, if you, the first page of Rutherford County State Report Card, it tells you what percent's local, what percent's state, what percent's federal, and it gives you, you know, an amount to look at there. And you can compare it with other districts and systems.
So, just, again, just the lines, you know, a large part of ours is state, and that percentage has gone up in the years I've been here.
Any other questions on this? Page three, anything jumps out at you? Okay, page four. Most of that's explanatory items. Some of those are subtraction, so that's pretty good in some of that, so. So, I guess when you look at your grand total initially, you're looking at about a plus seven point one percent. And again, think about how much of that's state? That under, other, one point five percent for all of your employees, that two point one eight for technology funding that's added into that. So, one of the things we want to do is we're going to talk to constituents and, and our county commissioners as how much of this is really not directly local, but is coming through, is that flow through this company state with changes they made. We're not going, we do not know, Jeff does not know, asking this question this morning, well, are we going to get any growth money this year? If that's recalculated every year, he was told today, maybe the end of June before he knows, because they take all of the districts in the state and they got one pot of money, you know, and then they decide how they're going to divide it, and then you get a slice. The, the pie doesn't get bigger, you just get a slice when we do that. I guess one of the things that concerns me in the growth, while we had a thousand and twelve increase, because our base is so high now, that may come to two and a half or three percent. You know, you realize a three percent growth for us now would be twelve hundred more students. So, when they calculate this, it depends kind of on how they look at it. Are they going to look at it in total number of students being added? Or are they going to look at it in percents to, to do that? Or how, how are they going to do this? So, it's an unknown to us. Do you have an, you don't have an idea either, Jeff? And be afraid to say much.
I think we will cross three million in growth numbers, growth payments this year. But again, until, I, I have found that number out before the day we've had our July commission meeting. It's just, it is that late before everyone reports.
The breakdown sheet, if there's anything, again, I mean, as I went through, I did mark some things, maybe some of you have. I, one of the, one of the big increases that I marked a little bit to let you see it is page three of thirty-one there. Looking at three ninety-nine, my question, you know, why eight point three on other contracted services? And this is under your special education budget, but part of that is increasing our, in Genesis and Rutherford Academy, the bids. I think so, is that in the number of students? So, that kind of let you know that, that caught my eye, probably catches yours too. Does anyone else have a, something you may have marked? You see on page eight that a hundred percent decrease on special ed bus aids. They've been moved over to the transportation part of the budget again with state recommendations. I mean, you're not really changing things, it's just, with the balance, if you move in one place, you know, they show up somewhere else. And that was in part of that speed aid that you saw earlier, and explain that to you.
If you don't buy it, if you plan funding for special education, a very expensive process. Let's, let's, let's go to probably the most expensive where you got CDC where you have so much one-on-one. How is that funded? How much is that local and how much is that?
It's, it's weighted based upon their severity. They have a, you, you have an option number, the lowest option is, is a, a learning disabled student, a gifted student. Typically, you're gifted students and all, it's based on time served. So, very often, an option two or something, which is a lot of, you're gifted, where you have some teachers who do them and all, would probably an option two. You, you get into, or you have to have somebody go to the school for the blind, or you have going to one of these residential or something, you get the options thirteen, fourteen, which means the state does provide additional funds for that. So, not enough to come out, and that's, I guess it is.
Can I grab that from, from a local standpoint? The more, the more special ed services you have to provide, it, it still does weigh upon the local citizenry. It's not all picked up by state and it's what, you know.
You notice that we basically operate our own behavior modification classrooms. You know, they're signed in our school, and so we, you had one or two of those at Stewart's Creek. So, we kind of, they're out at different places in the county. Rather than doing a residential or something like that, we hire teachers and education assistants and all to try to help that call, and then we, the students may come in and out of those programs. Jeff, I don't know, the, part of it is federal, part of it is state.
Part of it's federal. Our IDEA monies are for special ed. We have kind of a mix. We have staff and we have contract services, materials supplies, and we have the IDEA money. We do get, most years, I will bring you an amendment, this year I think it was two, two hundred and seventy thousand. We will get, it's a flow-through that hits the general purpose budget. Some of the, the high-cost services, we intentionally code to the GPS budget, because if they're in there, we are eligible for some additional funding. It's a federal flow-through through the state. And we got two hundred and seventy thousand more than I budgeted this year. That, that number varies wildly, some years it's nothing. I've seen it be more than the two seventy. And I usually budget about four hundred and fifty thousand. But most of the federal hits in GP, probably, probably over two-thirds of it.
You may not be aware that when, with this federal money, like Title I, special ed and all, we have to send letters to private schools and in Rutherford County and all. And if you'd like to come to a meeting and you'd like to, based on your numbers or that sort of thing, you know, they could get part of that. Most of them don't want the strings attached that we have to do for the federal government. But I, and I don't know, right off the hit my, top of my head right now whether how many we have or some, but that's one. Yeah, I think the Catholic school right there somewhere. But we have to send invitations to all of these others, just to let you know, that's part of the process. Get your money, Jeff, and do that invitation. It's complex. Anything else that, I mean, again, that you saw from all the pages that catch your eye and let you go?
I would suspect every entity, yeah, and county government goes to commission asking for some of the pre- share parts and so forth. So, you have any sense of where we are in line with that?
I don't, the, I, I go to all of the commission's budget committee meetings. And they have not started reviewing the individual departments' budgets yet. That will start probably, I don't remember if it starts week after this or two weeks after this. I think, I think maybe, I think, well, I'm not certain. I, when, by the time we have our meeting on the twenty-first with health and education and the commission's budget committee, the commission budget committee will all maybe ready to be reviewing.
Any sense of where revenues are as far as county concerned?
The county is not doing as well on property taxes as we are because of some of the, the reappraisals that have been appealed. We have, we increased our percentage of total students in the county this year. So, we, the city will get a smaller percentage of the property and sales taxes next year. So, that, that has helped keep our property tax level steady, whereas the county will see a drop somewhat. But that, that's the one I'm really worried about at this point.
So, thanks to you.
The, the county gets almost no sales tax. It's a very small number of them, because most of the county where there are establishments that pay that collect and remit, those taxes are in the counties.
If, if you kind of want to know the cost of your buses on page twenty-two, kind of let you see that. As you look at the line three fifteen or so there, those nine transit buses, there, there's actually one bus on the three twelve. We did have to do another bus for-
For Genesis.
For Genesis. I mean, even, even, even when we paid them to carry them, we also wind up paying the transportation over there, so. I can't tell you exactly how many buses we total are tied to that contracted services, but there's-
Seven or eight.
Seven or eight. We provide that plus the time there, you know, so that's kind of let you know. Gosh, they're quiet tonight, Jeff.
Where's Bear Bones?
Well, they're not, they're just not new, they're just not new people. Maintenance is not taking any new people, you know? I mean, it's, putting the STS's back is kind of somewhere we were. And, and your, your number of teachers is just kind of unknown a lot of times to you. Of course, if you, if you go over your number, like this year, what we estimate, the state will give us more money, you know, for that. We'll have the local part, though, you'd have to match with that.
And we, we are at a point, and we usually reach this point, outside of the staffing, which we still will be looking at, in these other expect, non-staffing areas, about anything anyone could propose a cut to. I could, I could go to something and say, I have as much reason to increase this line item. We, holding that number to three percent is tiny. And, and because that includes our buses.
I asked Jeff, I said, how about money saving on utilities and electrician, of course, we saw most. They've been in enough years now that from last year's budget, the savings occurred, but it occurred back. I mean, it's reoccurring every year or so, but it's not another big minus this year because you did the electrical things. And the water piece hasn't had a chance to, it was put in last summer, so we're not seeing a big change in that. You know, at this point with another school, I don't know, it may have, have a very likely to go up a little rather than go down in that piece, so.
It's unfortunate that investigative reporting is always on the negative side of things as opposed to positives. Some have seen a couple of days ago, but the, the state government is taking the task because of what lights being brought all the time and not having to do any savings, kind of what we happen to have. Like I say, it would be nice at some point in time to investigate before we come back and say that. But here's someone doing right. It'd really make me proud of what's taken place, and that was done before. I was on board with the foresight to do a lot of the interest saving that's being done here. I think it's always proper to keep that in the mind's eye of our taxpayers. There's a lot of really good things there, and I know you'll bring that up too.
Well, and some of it is through the building program too. That's, going to the geothermal is probably, that's been a significant.
What would it have been?
Yeah.
It didn't show manners here, but what would it have been?
Yeah, I remember when I was done, so, you know, and, and basically I was giving her phone, it seemed like a phone call, but we could try to change every light in the building.
Right.
But are they crazy? Why are we doing that? But it, it, it makes a lot of sense once, once it's online. You guys have been something, at the end of the day, to save somebody. It's a really good thing. Very pleased we're doing that.
You're talking about which, which Rutherford County's done for a number of years, the forty watt fluorescent bulbs and the super saver came in at thirty-five. So, I can remember even back in my days as, as principal and all too, we were going around and trying to put in thirty-five watts and forty watts to reduce that. We've always-
Well, I do know that, that, as we went through Stewart's Creek, you just pointed out that, that there are sensors there to be able to do that. How many of our buildings in the, in the system?
All of, all of them. We, we, that was our second energy conservation project that we did school law.
Very good.
And-
We hope to save more money if Mr. Clardy's grant comes through and we begin to get paid for by the grant, you know, devices to put on it, to look at it and control it, and then somebody to kind of monitor that. That, that savings may produce additional savings from a grant. If it works through, okay.
Are we, are we going to make the, are we going to vote tonight on this?
I'm open. Do they need to, do you think?
It, it would be fine. I mean-
After, I mean, we've had, we've had several looks at it, and we've had several opportunities to talk about it. I'm not sure, other than the joint meeting, that we, that we will meet again about it, will we?
Not unless something comes up or something comes up where y'all want to.
You have another regular board meeting you can tack on if you desire to look at it some more. It's just, that's a-
You want to put on the agenda? Okay, let's just do that, put on the agenda if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
That's good.
Add this to the agenda.
Next, yeah, next week.
Okay.
That'd be before you have to be with the commission, so they'll give you a chance to look up some of it. Call us if you have questions.
Well, I, I don't want to be guilty of, of, of turning a blind eye to, to anything. At the same time, I think the, the record is, is clear. And again, pleased that we have a per pupil number that's below the state average by about a thousand dollars.
Thousand twenty-five, last year.
I think that anybody that wants to look and, and see how the budget's been done in the past, we have an excellent record. And based upon that, I, I have a trust factor with, with what's taking place with Mr. Shemkin, our director of schools, that they've taken this and, and worked it extremely closely. And not that we can't take, take it to task, but I think the record in the past speaks for itself.
I, I agree with you. I, I generally try to make practical through each line item. If you do that, you can pretty well see from year to year that there's not a whole lot of fluff in this thing. I mean, there was no fluff.
What percent of our budget's personnel, did you say? You had that figure you were throwing around once in a while.
I made a gip for you real fast.
That, that there's not a lot of control on many things that we have. What do you think about it?
Well, and what skews it a little bit is basically some of this money that's come from, well, there's one-time-
It is skewed.
The, the one-time money for the, for the technological updates, so. The, the medical increases and the, and staffing the new high schools.
You know, I wish there were a way, our employees do so much that we could get better than this one and a half percent for the state, you know? I, I sent, Jeff, I was reading it this morning, New York Times put out an article with, with Regina, and it tracks from, going back from two thousand nine to twelve, wasn't it, Jeff? Something like that.
I, I-
Something like that, it's a chart, and the effective rate with inflation off for teachers in Tennessee is a minus four point five percent. It's got every state in the nation. I mean, but it, but the whole article was about across the nation in education budgets because of what's happening, that you're seeing something similar to this. But we actually have, Tennessee had one of the highest of those listed. So, our people are real troopers and, and, I mean, thank you.
Eighty-two point six percent is staff and benefits.
Eighty-two what?
Point six percent. I hope I did that. I hope I did that.
And the other, much of the other would be utilities buses probably.
Anybody else? Mr. Sam, I'd like to say once again, thank you, you, Mr. Odom, for giving us a, a good update here, and we'll look forward to moving, moving forward with it next week. We'll meet again next Tuesday and Wednesday.
Correct.
And got the graduations for the rest of the week, so. I guess everybody can rest up here in the next few days, because we'll need it next week. Any other comments?
Mr. Odom, just real quick, just let the board know, I did bring those maps to which city and county, hoping that we can talk or something. Everybody wants copies too.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Let's hold it, you're good. We're adjourned.